Hello. Hey, guys. I messed it up. Yeah.
Five Bravo Ten.
We're co-4.
Five Bravo Ten, I copy. Eight Alpha Eleven, six, seven, stop. Eight Alpha Eleven. I'll be, uh, in front of three oh three North Summit, Florida Tag, five three one one, Bravo Bravo, on the several Ford truck. Eight oh three, North Summit. Three zero three.
Five Bravo Ten, Central. Any updates from the South person call?
One, two, one.
Which is so good for the environment. Let's talk about climate change next. Let's talk about climate change next. Let's talk about all past that I think I've ever been coming into.
What's her last name in the parking lots?
Oh, yes.
I just forget the job.
Yes, I always said on that. I don't even, who was that movie going back to? I don't know. And he was like born in it and the mom couldn't even there and just like rolled everywhere. And I'm like, oh, boy, was that.
I should just get the meeting started. I'm not gonna interrupt with the meeting.
I should have told you this was so funny. I would have slipped the money on it, but I don't care. We could have run through it. Imagine having me and that would have been so funny for that. Like, maybe you see me rolling down the street. Yeah. Yeah. Jamie. Yeah. I don't actually work for this board up until March. My dad was like, it's just, it's okay. Happens. Cancelled through Tuesday. He found out December and it was more.
Very disgusting. Medical exemption attorney.
I know exactly. I know exactly what I'm doing.
The attorney's issue is provide our particular.
I don't know that to be the truth.
My mom is great retired. And just my dad's name, doing it, but they keep it little and it's keeping it little. And I hope they can have it. And my dad was like, well, I can't believe it. It's just too much. But he's on.
Just saying if we represent a different, bad model.
I mean, he went to Dr. D. It was like over two hours.
Every model has a policy, every business has a policy. Yes, one of them.
Okay, we're making, we're making changes. They can wait that song and we will allow each one of them to have any other time.
Special alert for you, you're on L E T emergency track, a player emergency.
I just want to. I mean, we're not necessarily your mark.
Yeah, no, we were calling.
Go ahead and ask her to leave. They're just, they're asking her to leave.
So, what I'm gonna ask real quick, do you understand you want to speak at the meeting tonight? That's perfectly fine. We're gonna ask you to do a step outside when it's your turn to speak, come on in, open the dice, or the welcome to speak at that point in time, and we ask you to leave. If you want to sit in here, listen to the board meeting, you're welcome to do that, which requires your mask for our policy. Okay? So, you can hear the meeting. She'll be able to, we'll, we'll set up, she can hear the meeting. You can hear the meeting through. You can hear, you can hear the meeting through. Let me answer questions. You can.
No, no, we're not ordering Governor DeSantis. He said to be in the public space. I don't care anymore.
That actually does not.
He told me, I'm allowed to be here today.
That doesn't, for K twelve, that does not deduct K twelve.
Can we call DeSantis then? Because you're just telling me that rules don't matter.
I'm asking, I'm asking real quick. It does not apply to me.
I am not.
One last thing is, if you want to speak, please step outside or if you're more than welcome to come in, you can sit at the lounge. You can sit at the diner, and then you're more than welcome to, to speak once you've done these protections. If not, if not.
Your mom said not outside. I need to reveal to all the people that are gonna watch this on TV, okay? We are citizens of the United States, residents of Florida. Our governor has told us that we are allowed to be in public places without a mask on, and that he will not enforce anything with a citation or the fine. I am acting within my rights.
So, we're gonna ask you guys to move them, please.
Residently and as an autonomous sovereign individual. I'm not a jerk. I'm a mom. I love this country. I love the people that live here.
You want me to say trespass now that they refuse to go? Because I already asked him a couple times.
And I care about you and your health. I asked.
Yeah, tell them, tell them that.
And I'm done with this. So, let's start speeding.
I think so, yeah. All right.
So, one last thing, if you don't want to respect me, if you're not wearing a mask, you're welcome to come in and speak, uh, when it's your turn to speak, and they'll ask you to leave again. If you refuse to do that, I'm forced to then impose trespass on all of you that are here.
Are you really willing? Are you really willing to put five in one?
Anybody else?
I want, I just. You are gonna sit here and you guys are gonna watch this. We want what's best for children, what's best for your children.
Lovers in jail.
I want to ensure that it's clear, okay? It's the city of Deland. The city of Deland, this is the Deland City Police Officer. They have approached us since I've been going to trespass on. You know how many times we try to have.
Hey, uh, on Lieutenant Tease's request, can you meet us at two hundred North Clara?
They have a meeting where we want to stress our opinions about wearing masks for children. When the governor of this state has told us, you cannot take us out of here for not wearing a mask.
I asked you several times to wear a mask and asked you to leave. Now, now, you're refusing.
I need to ask you guys to please take care of my kids. I have three kids outside. I will not allow this to happen. I have a car and I'll take my husband. My husband is out of town. He's out of town until Thursday. I'm asking you guys, this is.
And they come home with me, is that okay?
This is the village, okay? And this is the community that we're building, and we are not standing for this kind of coercion anymore. Yes, sir, please take care of my arms if that's what you want to do. I'm done. No, I will not walk outside. We're, I'm not leaving this building. Governor DeSantis needs to see that this is what is happening in his state, and I hope that President Trump sees this as well. This is not what we stand for as a country. I want to apologize to my children, I want to apologize to my husband, I want to bring you guys through this. It is absolutely horrific. We literally not see Germany as an end, and we didn't do anything, and we let six million people die, and that's where we're going. This is what is happening next. When you remove people from public spaces, they're not covering their faces. That's what happens next. This is exactly why we're here today, guys. This is exactly why we're here today. I don't want to go to jail. I never in my life thought I would. I will wait outside and I'm speaking.
I never thought this is where we're gonna go, but if that's what it comes down to, then that's what it comes down to.
And that's, that's what it's gonna come down to. If you will not get started until we wait outside, but I'm speaking today at this meeting. We'll be here till some. I also want to make a shout out to people's rights. If you guys could all share this. Tag whoever.
Share, share this. I'm gonna save it on here.
I'm not going to follow the guidelines that you're setting because they do not, they are not in accordance with our state guidelines. Louisiana County School Board. This isn't a private business. The governor said everywhere that we can be that is public, we do not have to comply. He said if you're in a private business.
We're medically exempt.
Of course, it's a private business. But this is not a private business. Is anyone aware that public education is public? I can be here. But I'm not leaving here. And I am angry because, when did this start? In March. So, I'm not angry from today. I'm angry from March fourteenth, when my husband got sent home from his job and was told he couldn't work at his school anymore. I'm angry since March, and I'm angry from the Deland City meetings where they told everyone in the city of Deland they need to wear a mask. This is not about today. And also, I want you to not comply and wear a mask. I know how this is. It's not anything personal, and I don't want to be in this position.
He trusts the law, is there not anything you can do about, like, being in a public place?
The problem that Lieutenant is trying to explain to her is this isn't about the mask. It's the administrators who are asking her to leave. She's causing a disruption, whether that's founded or unfounded. That's, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying she's causing it. You seem like a reasonable person, okay? And so am I. I'm not saying she's not. I'm saying just me talking to you, you coming up to me, and us having a decent conversation leaves me to believe you're a reasonable person. This isn't about a mask. This is about, there's other people here, not just you, not just her, not just your group, there's additional people here, right? We're all here for a reason, probably for the kids. I'm not even sure what the meeting's about, but we're probably all here for a good reason, all right? The meeting, or whatever was going on here, has stopped because there's a disruption, whether it's good, whether it's bad, what, there's a disruption.
The school board caused the disruption.
Whatever it is, okay? Whatever it is.
You know what I mean? Like, they're harassing her.
I hear what you're saying, and that.
That is harassing her.
I have no idea. I'm not gonna say yes or no, because I don't, I need to know more about it. You know what you follow what I'm saying? I can't just go, yes, I agree with you, and I'm not gonna do that, just because I don't know anything about it. So, the problem we have now is the meeting's not gonna go forward. He's offered a compromise, all right? They're saying there's a medical exemption. Whether it is or isn't, I don't know, and I'm not gonna look into it. I'll take her at her word that she has a medical exemption. I'll take you at your word that you have a medical exemption.
They're not allowed to ask, and they're not allowed to discriminate.
I hear what you're saying. Somebody here brought up they had a medical exemption, right? That's what I'm saying. I'll take you at your word that that's what you have. Okay? So, anyways, so the administrator said, okay, listen, this is our rules when everybody wears masks. If you say you can't wear a mask, you want a medical exemption, that's fine. Let's work out a compromise because we're reasonable people and want to move forward. Let's have everybody walk aside, and when you want to come in, you can come in. They're still allowing you to speak. They just want to have a certain thing for other people in the room who don't agree with your set of, your ideas. That's all. All right? So, it, that seems pretty reasonable to me as somebody that just walked in here trying to resolve a problem, which is kind of my job. Now, where we're at from here is that, for whatever reason, let's just use her for example, she doesn't want to agree to this compromise. I will not agree to that. Okay? So, where do we go from there?
I want to just shout out to all of you women. You're the strongest people in this country right now. You're holding our country accountable. I am so honored to say that.
I don't want you here at this property anymore. You're causing disturbance. And if she won't leave, he calls the police and says, hey, I want this person to trespass. So, now it's not about a mask, it's about her not leaving. Her being at this property when she's not allowed to. I know it's over that, but it's moved to something else. All right? I pull you over for a seatbelt violation, you decide to flee from the police, I don't arrest you for the seatbelt violation, I arrest you for fleeing from the police. So, that's kind of where we are. We don't want to take her to jail. I don't want to take you to jail. That's a lot favorable when you're an asshole. I want everybody to get along.
Hey, I'm a nurse, I know about pickers.
Exactly. So, we just want to resolve.
It's just not fair and equal treatment to be able to sit in and listen to the meeting if we have to wait outside.
But what I understand, and I would be upset about that too, however, we, I'm a reasonable person just like you, if we come to an agreement and say, hey, you can speak if you want, you can come in here without your mask, are we also gonna have a mask on? I want you to just stand outside while you do that because you don't agree with my way of thinking. You can't force me to agree with you. You can't tell me, Jason, I want you to take your mask off right now. You can't force me to do that, just like I can't force you to put it on. And I appreciate that. So, in this situation, one of us has to come, or both of us should come to an agreement or a compromise, because we all live here. I live in Deland, I don't know if you live in Deland, but this is, well, this is our community, central Florida, okay? So, if I say I want to speak, and he's allowing you guys to speak, and say, I want to hear the meeting, or he'll sit, make arrangements for you guys to hear and see the meeting out here at the TV and, um, a speaker or something.
I'm okay with that because I do want to speak.
Yeah. So, so that's all we do. We, we try and compromise. And if we can't, then what do we do? They either adjourn the meeting and nobody gets to speak, and that's not good for anybody. Or they say, hey, she needs to leave, and she refuses, and I have to take her, I don't want to take her to jail. Now, what's that, what's that gonna solve? It's not gonna solve any problems, it's gonna solve this immediate problem right now, maybe.
We're at a Freedom Rally or something, like.
I want that as well, and all this stuff is very confusing, but that's where we are. We're trying to work out a compromise. Hi, I'm smiling. I know you can't see.
I can tell because of your eyes. You have pros.
One second, one, ah, come on. Five Bravo Ten, Central. I have background, where you calling me?
Cap, uh, forty one, going to add disturbance on Uglud by itself. Uh, suspect has a hammer, industry violent.
Mutual aid from, uh, twenty, see if you can send a deputy.
Five Bravo Ten, strike the background as well. Five hundred eleven, I copy.
Thank you, Central, and if you would, just let twenty know I only have two officers right now.
Cap, five hundred eleven, come back before you want to do that.
Yeah, that's fine, just as long as, uh, twenty three, I only have two officers probably for the rest of the day.
Do you pay taxes? And do you pay, uh, taxes?
It's right behind you. You're all right, you're all right.
And you live in Louisiana County, and all of you live here, so you're.
I think he's coming down out of where he's at.
This is my place.
I think he's on his way. Yeah, no problem.
Twenty five, uh, uh, I don't know if it's official. Twenty four. He's breaking from the thirteen P, looking on the bolo. I copy. Interference to the bolo, it's New York and Kepler. Westbound to Black Mazda, four door, dark tint.
Do you know her?
Occupied with a robbery suspect out of Simole County.
You don't know who that is? Oh, I thought you did, because that's what you sent me.
The tag's gonna be.
No, I know, but do you know who that is? Oh, okay, all right. Well, I love you. Oh, who is that?
Back on a Black thirteen Mazda, Alexander Ortiz.
Oh, yeah, 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 all right. All right, love you, bye.
There have been some children finding the flagpole kind of dangerous.
I'll let him know. One second. Hey, go ahead.
Seven oh four West Uglud Avenue, suspect with flash B.
I don't know what that means. Positive or not positive? Oh, not detect. All right, we'll just hang out, don't do anything. We're still working on it, ma'am. We're still working on it. I got a security officer coming out. There's a, a little bit of a discussion.
Well, I want them to clean the room.
Hey, Cap. Yes, ma'am. Um, so we're at, uh, the school board, two hundred North Clara, on the north side of the building, there's the amp, I'm not sure if you're aware where this is, it's north side of the building, you'll see our patrol cars. Uh, it's, if you go, uh, where the police department is, Clara there, you just go one block north, um, and it's, I think you can turn right past Rich. It's a big parking lot in the back. It's a big, uh, red brick building. Okay, cool. All right, bye. See, he's almost here. Miller and, um.
The county of Hampshire.
Sumter and Harris are both negative.
They are telling us that all of the rights that we have to not wear masks under.
Hasn't gone anywhere yet. They're just standing by, going, go get that.
But, but Harris and.
Harris and Sumter.
They will not enforce this, and will not send anybody out. They're telling that another one will be held because right here where we're sitting immediately, they have a right.
Yeah, she can stay right there.
Thank you.
Yes, somebody else called and said some of the kids are trying to climb a flagpole or something like that.
They're probably on the back team. Oh, my God.
Five hundred eleven. Five Bravo Ten, forty one, you're by three lanes left. She knows how long her hazard visual on them. Uh, white male, no shirt, blue jeans, no shoes, and has a hammer.
Thirty one, you on patrol?
Yeah, go ahead, Sarge.
All right, ten nineteen, drop him off and go ten eight. Eleven, you on patrol?
Good.
All right, you guys go ten eight, available for calls.
Bravo, thirty one, seventy, there's no injuries, just partial signal sixteen. Road rescue, code one for hazards.
Copy.
Five Bravo Ten, Central.
Five Bravo Ten.
All right, seven fourteen, uh, eleven and thirty one are gonna come back ten eight.
Copy.
Bravo, ten eight, you read it, patrol.
Good.
Paperwork, ten ninety, clear the trash mark.
Oh.
Copy.
This is my name, uh, yeah, and they've been explained by the, by Aikens, by the school board attorney, um, school board rep, uh, that the mask mandated counts for here. I'm waiting for dice to get here, so, because there's cameras here, and as soon as we, because there's about six or eight of them that we're gonna have to deal with.
And I've got kids.
And they, yeah, they got kids, and it's, it's a mess up here with me. Right, and. Right, and it's been multiple times, and we're, we're trying to talk, and they're willing just to, you know, turn around, put their hands behind their back and go. They're, they're willing to do that, but there's a bunch of cameras here that are gonna, I want somebody here that can either answer that right, right now, what's going on, or I want somebody else, I want. A legend, if I don't know where he's at, so. Right, yeah, it's the same people that were at the, the mask ordinance for, uh, it's the same. Right. Right, and we're trying to work with them, and, but it's just not gonna work. But I want somebody here, because there's a camera, and they're, we're gonna go, is the camera gonna go on us, and it's gonna be maybe some questions.
I sent him on map.
All right, yeah. Yeah, and they already know that I'm waiting on dice before we do anything, before we take any action, so. All right? All right, thank you. Love.
Say it was right around the corner, I just sent him a map.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I have my chain.
Yeah, no problem.
Hey, Cap, um, just seeing where you at.
Can we come meet him right down here, show him?
I just want to know if you think that this is actually saving you from a deadly virus, if you actually think that's doing anything. Do you really? I don't think so. There's like zero medical reason for this. This is all controlled, and you're filing for it.
Okay, so you're up at ISP? All right, all right, we're, uh, Garfield. Okay, all right, we'll see you here in just three minutes. Thanks, sir. Bye. He's at ISP in Garfield.
Okay.
Copy, Central, you're in first emergency traffic.
Five Bravo, 41, central, they're off to... Five Bravo, 41, central, change location on their route to them. They're just 14. Uh, don't have any charges. Evaluate for BA, um, but nothing at this point, and no threats or anything with the hammer.
So, for no charges. And evaluate for BA. 524, copy the wellbeing check.
Five, 524, central, two floors tags.
Go ahead.
India, India, nine, eight, Bravo, uniform, so far.
So far.
Quebec, Charlie, Julia, Sierra, one, four. Five, 524, back center.
Go ahead.
951 requested, uh, rescue, but we can cancel it. We're gonna be okay. Tow trucks can handle it when they get here.
Copy, no hazards, 14. This far, Bravo, 15, 16.
544, central.
544?
541.
Okay. (noise)
Are they gonna have the meeting?
I'm not sure, ma'am.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I didn't really want to attend the meeting, and...
We're doing, we're doing our best to resolve the problem.
So, the same group, the same group that came to the mask ban ordinance at the city, the city hall, the same, now, they don't, they don't wanna wear masks. School board said, okay, we'll wait outside, live stream it, we give you the, the live stream it, and we'll bring each one of you in one at a time to talk, because they're claiming medical exemption. And the, the attorney for, the school board said, let's say some, some type of verification that they... That, that, this is the procedure that they'll use. They wait outside, and one at a time, they would come in and be allowed to get their voice and speak to, uh, to the commission, or to the school board. Uh, Mr. Akins told them that, that, gave them that, that information, and said, if you don't wanna do, if you're not gonna do that, um, you're to leave, you're trespassing. Um, so he, he's already told them that they're, they're trespassing.
So did Mr. Penley.
And so, I, I went up and reiterated off of what, uh, Mr. Akin, Akin said about the school board can say who's here and not here under their, their rules, and that they would need to leave, step outside and come in one at a time. The school district attorney, Kevin Penley, and the school board attorney, Ted Doran, told them the same thing. Um, with that, saying that, uh, there's an, there's an emergency order in place that has been with, has been upheld regarding masks being worn at, at school board meetings, at least school board meetings. Um, through the gov, because they're saying the governor hasn't enacted, or the county hasn't enacted a mask mandate, and the governor hasn't enacted a mask ma, so they're going on that, but they were explained that there's an, there's a emergency order in place that's been upheld, that school districts can impose a mask mandate. Um, she's refused, she says she's not gonna leave. Um, she's been respectful, she's loud, and, 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 you know, got her six or seven other people that she's, she's discussing with, um, but she's like, take me, you know, and she's willing to put her hands behind her back and stuff like, she's not, not being aggressive or physically confrontational, she's just verbally and just being defiant to the, to the rule. Now, I wanna ask you to maybe give them an opportunity to listen to you, just, just say it. There's three cameras back there, Channel 6 is definitely one of them, we're recording.
It's already, they're all, uh, streaming it live on Facebook as well.
Yeah, they're already panned us as soon as we walked in the room. Uh, but before we do anything, uh, if you can get Chief to call, before we do anything, before we, before we do anything as far as...
And I think all of them have been trespasses. I think we're mainly speaking with the, the, the ringleader there, but I'm thinking if she go...
Except, except the, except the one that's in the front row with her, she's just, she's the same as Rachel.
Tell the chief I said, hey, sorry.
Yeah, they're not in there gonna cause a fight or anything. They're just being disruptive.
I, I mean, I get it. I get their little stance. They've had their 15 minutes of fame, we're gonna move on, in my opinion.
Is there any other way to resolve this without somebody going, having to go to, to jail? Is there a way to adjourn the meeting and have it scheduled for a different date?
No.
No?
We gotta charter school, required charter schools. And if we ask for the house of property, you're not, we don't wanna rush and assault the property, open out of the building. And anybody that's not gonna comply with it's what we need to do. Alright, so, now, if she refuses, you guys, it's up to you, but if she comes back, then we will wanna progress. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the, the, the problem lies with taking, physically grabbing and removing, right? She's gonna passively resist.
I know.
Which is what she's doing. I doubt that she's gonna put up a fight. We'll probably, if we get to, you're now under arrest, we'd like you to leave or whatever. She's not gonna leave. She'll make us handcuff her, make, make a scene, and then we'll, you know, she may not go. That's what I'm saying. So, if, for us to put hands on it, it's, yes, she needs to be trespass. Yes, I wanna follow through with trespass charges.
We will, we will. Okay? If they leave now, we're done. If they don't leave, then we're gonna follow the trespass charges.
I gotcha, I gotcha.
I think I'll probably like just wait outside.
You want me to ask anybody else to come up here? Cars or anything?
No, I wanna make it like a show. What they're wanting to do is have the cameras capture us grabbing them and moving them out. That's what they want. That's what, that's what they're seeking. The school board's meeting was supposed to start at one o'clock, and now it's almost two. And technically, can you check what city's carrying?
Okay, okay.
20, central.
Just run in.
That's the problem. Everyone else is complying.
Yeah, it's fine.
That's why we're here. That's exactly why we're here. We're a society that's losing our democracy. We're a, we're, we're a country that's losing the right to not comply. It's like, that's not a rule you can make about me. My body is mine. I'm an autonomous person, and I have personal property, and I can somehow tell you what to put on my face.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Especially because my governor gave us that regard.
Separate but equal. Oh, I can't think of saying that, Kate.
That's what this is. This is, that's what this is. I'm so confused. How is this stuff with me? We have to put the mask on here, but we're talking about the mask over here. I'm sorry.
Here's the thing.
Hi, Chris.
Hey, Anthony, say, just a quick call.
Okay, I'll try to call him back. Um, thank you so much.
The law is that they're about to release, there's no longer one here on the property, there's trespasser, right now I can put her in handcuffs and arrest her, I don't wanna do that. It's not about it. Anyone can call the cops and say that, but if they're not affiliated with the school, if you're just out there in the parking lot, yeah, who did this guy trespass here, I come and say, hey man, are you affiliated? One thing is...
They're lost in translation, but you're saying, can anybody, yeah, anybody can call the police, they do it all the time.
Yeah, so like if I'm at the library, which is a public place, and they're like, I don't like to be in here because you don't have a mask, so I'm gonna call the police and ask if you'd be removed for trespassing, is that really in the right to do that?
Well, first, they're going to, we're trying to resolve what the problem is originally, they don't want you there because of a mask or whatever policy they have, right? Let's say it's not a policy of a mask, let's say they have to...
Hey Rebecca, I'll be right back, I'm gonna go grab a snack for my boy, do you want anything?
Oh, I don't have a cup.
Do you need water?
I can, yeah.
Please, please.
This is my son's water bottle, so I'm a little worried he doesn't have water, but it's empty.
Yeah, so like I was saying, we wanna try and resolve the problem. You wanna be at the library, you wanna be here for the meeting, that's fine, but there's rules people have to follow. When do your rights infringe on my rights? Can you make me, can you tell me to take my mask off?
No, but I would.
Well, maybe you would, maybe you're the kind of person.
But isn't that the same as them trying to tell you to put one on?
May, maybe, but...
I mean, that's what we're here for today.
This is true, right? We live in Florida and people make rules and they say, hey, Jason, hey, Rebecca, so they say, hey, Jason, don't enforce these rules that we make.
Right.
And if you or I don't like these rules, then we elect people to change the rules.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so where we're at right now is we tried to compromise and nobody wants to compromise, so where do we go? She wants us to arrest her so it can go on camera, I don't wanna do that, whether that's her intention or not, I think that's what I'm getting from her conversation, I haven't spoke to her directly, I'm just overhearing the conversation.
I think it's like, where is it, where is it gonna end?
Where are we gonna go from here? What is your goal, to go and speak at the meeting here? What if the meeting doesn't happen?
Right. I'm willing, I'm willing to walk out of the law space, but I just...
They're saying they're gonna...
I have to speak today.
No, I understand, and there's people outside that want that as well, and I'm sure some of these people here want that.
Right.
So, when do your guys' rights and stuff infringe on their rights?
Right?
And you want me to come here, I'm not a lawyer, I don't make $250 an hour, you know what I'm saying, it's hot out?
Yeah.
Stuff like that, and I'm sweating, I'm just trying to figure it out, so we can all figure it out. He seems they've made a reasonable compromise. Hey, I'll allow you not to wear your mask in here, you guys just step outside, we'll livestream it, put it on TV speakers, you'll be able to, and you can come in here and say your piece, and then you can leave when the meeting's done. At least that way the meeting goes on, and then everybody's happy, sort of, at least it goes on. But if we have to arrest her, if we have to arrest you guys because, for trespassing, not for speaking, go ahead, I'm videotaping too. Not scared of video tape. So, I, that doesn't solve our problem.
Yeah.
Because then you get out of jail very quickly if we have to do that, and I don't, trust me, I don't wanna do that, Rachel, I don't. I'm gonna go back to the car where it's nice and cool and drink my soda, alright?
We're not, we're not menaces.
I'm not saying you are.
You know.
But here we are, I'm here now because of this situation. I can't go help other people, and I'm short-staffed today, there's people at the police who aren't there, have COVID that came down with it, we're short-staffed, I need to be out there in the public serving them, and I can't leave because of this situation. So, somebody here has to compromise. If the meeting doesn't go on, you guys aren't satisfied. If we have to arrest you, which we don't want to do, the problem remains. We need to, we need to figure that out. You may be, I know, hey, I appreciate that, you need to show support for her, right?
She has to make...
This is true, well, she wants to make her point, and if her point is, I'm gonna stand up, I'm gonna be defiant, I'm gonna say, hey, you guys need to listen to me, and if that means I have to get arrested, that's what it means. At least I get arrested and I show everybody else that, hey, I'm serious about this, which is fine. She can do that. I don't want her to do that, though, I want us to all get along.
Nope, she sees people's faces covered and it freaks her out.
And they're supposed to act as if they're...
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 And they're supposed to act as if they're... And they're supposed to act as if they're...
Exactly, which is why I'm gonna...
Okay, uh, so are we done on the phone, sir?
Uh, yes ma'am, yes ma'am, we're done. She's on the phone with her attorney, and spoke to her attorney and it's clear that how they could attend the meeting.
All right, the first of all, the police is not here to enforce some mask rule, right? We're not here for that. That's the school board's rule, we're not here to enforce a mask rule. However, you guys have been trespass on the property, alright? You have been trespass, that's why we're here. This is the last time that we're gonna ask you to leave. You have to leave if you don't, if you've been trespass on the property. You all have been trespassing.
Yeah, it's just the ones without the, the young lady in the blue.
The ones without the mask, you can say it.
Yeah, you can say it.
Go ahead.
So, all five of you individuals, people right here...
Hold up, I have my mask on the whole time. My son kept taking it off, that's what I mean.
Have you been trespass?
It's not on her face.
Okay, watch this, and I'm, everybody over there, the mask...
I'm not concerned, listen, I'm not, I ain't concerned about the mask right now, all I'm concerned about is who have we given verbal...
Away from this property.
I spoke to nobody here.
Listen, I'm not up for debate, if you've been trespass on the property, let's go ahead and leave, start with you, you can back out.
Thank you Rebecca.
I've spoke to nobody about being trespass, so I don't know what you're talking about. I didn't speak to you, I've never spoken to you, who are you?
Ma'am, 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 just go ahead and leave.
You do not have to leave.
I'm not going either.
If you don't leave, you will be arrested for trespassing.
Trespassing for what?
You will be arrested for trespassing.
Why am I not allowed to be here?
Leave.
Why am I not allowed to be here?
Last time, I'm not gonna say it again.
Why can't you explain it to me?
Because they've trespassed you from the property.
For what?
They've trespassed you.
But on what grounds?
The owner, we're here, we're here because the owner has trespassed you from the property. You take that up with the school board.
Why did you trespass me? I've never spoken to any of you about anything, no warning was given to me.
Ma'am, 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 go ahead and leave.
No, absolutely not.
Go ahead and leave, or you will be arrested.
Stand up.
Alright, you'll be arrested one other time if you don't leave.
Please stop resisting, okay? I do not...
I'm not resisting anything.
You are, stand up and walk.
I'm not resisting, I wanna stay in for the meeting.
I need you to walk back here for me, okay?
I wanna stay for the meeting.
Can you please walk? I do not, I do not wanna get hurt, and I don't wanna hurt you, thank you.
Hope you guys are all getting this.
I appreciate you, thank you, thank you, thank you, I appreciate you. You just stand by right here.
Go ahead and leave.
Can you tell Lizzie to come get my daughter, please?
Got it?
She's only gonna be arrested if she refused to leave after she's been trespassing.
You refuse to leave because you are...
I'm taking the child out of here.
Go with Lizzie, please.
I'm trespassing, I'm taking the child. I own a house in this county, I pay taxes in this county.
Alright, well, get with the school board and then get your...
Where's the owner, I'd like to speak with the owner. Sorry that this is so difficult.
I'm not, I'm not angry, I'm not, we're not angry about nobody.
Don't apologize to us, we're, but we have a...
I appreciate you, thank you.
Make sure it's known that they're gonna arrest me while I nurse a baby. Make sure it's known that they're arresting me while I nurse a baby.
Ma'am, can you stand up, please?
I will not stand up, I will not, and you will not touch me while I hold my child. I hope you're recording this, love, I'm not leaving this room and I have the baby in my arms.
Ma'am, who can we get to come get your child?
We got a camera too, so you can stand up.
Yeah, but that, time and time again, has proven you have a body camera. They're standing out there, look at this.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Rachel. Wow. I love you.
It's alright, so I got one more.
This is what they do, can you go inside without a mask on?
No.
They put you on the ground, I'm laying on the ground.
Can you get her baby?
What?
Her child, the baby.
That's what I was trying to do. They were not letting people in to get the children.
I'll get one, okay.
I'd like to get a child, please.
I'll bring her in.
This is ridiculous.
I'll bring her in.
The governor, the governor, we do not have to wear a mask for the governor, I know my rights.
Well, you're trespass on the property, you have to leave, that's all, that's all we're gonna talk about, alright? Take it up with the school board.
We've allowed her back in here to help you with your child.
Well, she's eating.
Ma'am, you gonna go to jail for resisting?
How am I resisting by nursing her?
Because we're asking you.
Your body cam that you say, all of you guys' body cam sees my child is eating, I am a breastfeeding mom. The only nutrients that my child receives is breast milk, so when you arrest me, they're gonna have to figure out what they're gonna feed her, so I have to make sure that she's at least fed until that point.
Well, that won't be your fault, because we're asking you to leave and you refuse to do it.
No, because you guys will not honor our rights as citizens.
You're breaking the law.
We should be able to speak at this, we are not breaking the law by wanting to speak at this meeting.
You're violating the law, so you can't blame us for not being able to feed your child, you take accountability for yourself, that's not our fault, and you will be arrested if you don't leave.
And you can still breastfeed your child right out here.
Evan has my keys.
These are children.
In the trunk is a black diaper bag where her diapers are, I don't understand how all of you sit over here and you guys are all watching.
How do you feel good about this?
Ma'am, can you go ahead and take the babies?
I'm not gonna, if you're asking me to remove the baby, I am not going to remove...
Okay, well, you can get out.
Then you can leave that.
No, I'm gonna wait...
Alright, either that or you can leave.
That's why I asked you in here for.
Do you want me to, don't put your, don't put your hands on me.
Ma'am, we've already asked you.
Please, I will leave, please do not put your hands on me.
Okay, you're not leaving.
Do you want me, do you want me to take her?
You're not leaving, go ahead and leave.
Can you stop?
Thank you.
Don't touch her while she holds my baby, that's all I ask, don't touch her while she holds my child.
What is wrong with you?
You have my phone?
Okay, come on, ma'am, let's go.
There's a diaper bag in the trunk, she needs a diaper change.
Ma'am, get up out of the seat and let's go.
Stand up for us.
So, you guys, you guys really, all of this for a mask, all these because you guys are sheep, you guys are sheep, you're doing exactly what they say, you guys are a bunch of sheep. Next thing you know, it can be vaccines, you guys are just gonna sit there and fucking take it like little fucking sheep. Pathetic, you guys are pathetic.
Did we get everyone's, did we get everyone's, did he get everyone's name? Help him out with this.
I'll also give you my name.
You will? Hey. Can you help me, start working on getting people's names? Yeah. What happened?
She's scared.
Are you putting your hands on me?
Why not putting our hands on these people, bros?
Because they're not real men, that's why, because they're not real men.
A real man will not put his hands on me.
Absolutely, I'm a racist, for having that opinion.
Yeah, ain't nobody doing nothing wrong, and I know that.
What happens by the fact that I was trespass, what does that mean now?
If you come back to this property, which I assume encompasses all of the school board property here, within 365 days, you'd be subject to arrest. Okay? That can however be rescinded. And call up the property, the property owner is... I saw two hands on two fucking females.
Say, hey, this is what, I'd like you to rescind this.
Whatever.
You understand?
It was video, how can you deny it?
My name is Rachel, R-A-C-H-A-E-L, Cohen, C-O-H-E-N.
And what's your date of birth and age, Paul?
Three, fourteen, eighty-two.
Eighty-two, okay, no problem. Ma'am?
Thank you for your patience, we really appreciate it.
I'm trying, listen, I spoke with her, okay, this is, I didn't get an opportunity to speak with you in there because everybody else is speaking, we got a number of people here, myself...
His health is such in jeopardy, but he's outside here with us. That was the whole thing, his health, his health, but he's outside here with us. Can you explain that? If your health is in jeopardy and we won't wear a mask, we're so in jeopardy, why are you out here with us? What's the point?
We're just trying to resolve the problem, okay?
Does it make you feel good and powerful?
The problem is that we've lost our American rights, right? Our freedom to be free people.
Here's what, here's what I want, I wanted you guys to speak, I've already spoken to her, she can tell you after, outside of our presence.
So, we're waiting out here, but we can speak, we can go in to speak when it's our turn.
No, that time has passed, that time has passed.
We can't speak.
They were never gonna give us that time.
We tried to do that, ma'am, okay? And she can, she can explain it to you.
If we comply. I walked out on my own, and I want...
No, I know, and I appreciate that.
Are they gonna give me time to speak?
No, not anymore, you guys have been trespass, that's why I need your name.
They told us if we came out peaceably that we'd be allowed to speak.
That was before you were trespass.
I left before that.
They didn't inform you that they were trespassing.
They did not inform me of that.
They did it while you were sitting there, and so you didn't know, like, oh, I've lost my right to be here.
I was standing ready to leave and I was filming for her protection.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my lawyer and a number of people said we needed to film what was going on to make sure everything was covered.
Yeah, and it was all filmed, yeah, and I've been filming the whole time as well, just like you guys have.
They told us that if we came out here, we could watch the meeting and then they would call us in for comments.
That was, that was before, and you were, you were there, I was talking with you when all this was happening, okay?
Can you speak on my behalf for that, that I was going to leave on my own, and I did walk out, but they had to forcibly take people out... Can you speak on my behalf for that, that I was going to leave on my own? And I did walk out before. They had to forcibly take people out.
I will let them know. I will tell you, from Jason to you, I will tell them that that, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
What is your first name, please, by the phone?
Rebecca Sarwi.
R-E?
B-E-C-C-A. Sarwi, S-A-R-W-I.
W-I. S-A-R-W-I?
S-A-R-W-I.
Yeah, I was just saying. How you saying that? Um, do you have a middle name at all for you?
Jean. J-E-A-N.
Jean. And what's your daybird, Rebecca?
Eight, twenty-nine, eighty-four.
Twenty-nine, eighty-four. Okay. So like I, uh, told Rachel here, okay, you guys have been trespassed from the property. If you come anywhere on the property within 365 days, you'll be subject to arrest.
Does everybody understand that?
So if you come back onto the property and they call us, I had to come arrest you. I don't want to do that.
But I left on my own.
No, I understand, but they've trespassed you from the property. However, this can be rescinded, which means it can be taken back. I've explained that to her. You can call the school board and say, listen, I would really like to come back and speak and have an opportunity to speak. And they will make arrangements with you because they're reasonable people.
I don't know about that. As you just saw.
Well, we tried to compromise for our conversation earlier, right? They tried to compromise. So I'm sure they want you to come and speak. Okay? I will inform that. Okay. I'll inform that.
I'm pretty sure that they clearly want to pass this and don't want to hear from us. That's why they did this. I, I know, I know you're not partial. I'm just, I know. But I want, I want it to be noted that I left on my own and I did not resist.
You did it.
And I am also not trespassing because I have a right to be at a public property that I pay taxes for. And I have already signed up to speak. They know that I'm supposed to be speaking on this. And I do want to be part of the right to watch.
Well, they have, they have trespassed you. Okay? You are trespassed. After this, I'm going to ask you to leave and I'm sure you will because you're a reasonable person. And you'll make arrangements at a, at a later time with the school board here to come back and speak. Whatever that means. If that means they don't wear a mask or you stay out here and don't wear a mask, that'd be between you and them.
Well, can they call in?
Yes.
I mean, can you speak today? Because I need to talk to them today because they're voting today. That's why this is so important.
Yes, ma'am. Well, before I leave, I'll let them know.
So they can talk to these people who I couldn't talk to even though I worked for the school. That's what you're talking, that's what you're talking to take it up.
Okay? Alright, so we just need to leave now. But we, we thank everybody for their cooperation. We do. We understand everybody's frustrations.
We're not mad at you. We appreciate you. We love you. You physically drug me out of a building and you're saying thank you to me?
Well, we asked you very nicely to leave.
Are you going to go in and, I mean, can, can you get my number? I mean, I really do want to speak before they vote.
Yeah. Give me your number.
Three eight six, eight five two.
Eight five two.
Five six five one.
Five six five one. Three eight six, eight five two, five six, five one. Okay.
And I know that now, see, they're not going to hear from anybody who's opposed to their idea.
Somebody left their drink. I don't know that long since.
I wore my mask. I wore it the entire time. How's that make sense?
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that you, you did it.
I know, but how does that make sense then? How could I have been trespassed?
Well, let, let's...
Did I not wear it? You wore it the whole time. The entire time.
I understand. I hear what you're saying. I wasn't here the entire time.
I know that, but I literally... I'm just saying, this is, this is so clear, the abuse of power that they have over our children right now. This is, I mean, just, just shows it. That they call the cops on parents not wearing a mask to have them removed and, and call it trespassing. That's, it just exemplifies exactly why we're here today. That there's no oversight for them.
I hear what you're saying. Well, there's...
If they're not, if they're not going to allow me to come in to speak, they need to allow me to call in.
I will give them that information. Once I escort you guys down here and, and we're moving on our way, I, I give you my word, Rebecca, that I'm going to go let them know, okay? And I'll give you their phone number.
Yeah, I'm walking upstairs now. What's that?
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your cooperation again. Thank you.
Hey, ma'am.
Um, so we didn't actually arrest anyone, correct?
No, we've trespassed everyone from the property. Alright, they're all in the process of leaving. This was the female that was standing next to me, probably the most reasonable out of all of them. She was in the blue shirt right here. She's been trespassed to let the property have her. She would like to speak. So if there's a possibility to have her call or whatever, that's all she would like. I told her I'd pass that information on to you. Okay. Okay?
You're the property of the nation now. Families have no choice.
Yeah, I gave it to them. I can't tell you if he's going to call you or not, but I, like I told you, I, so I gave him your phone number and he seemed receptive.
Just taking the children.
So, alright?
I appreciate that. Thank you for rights as parents.
Alright, shut down.